We, of course, this is a wonderful forum for civil discourse on many topics and we're excited to hear from everyone who has taken the time and effort to come out tonight. We thank you for that. We want to make sure that within the respect of board norms, the no comments that are made are any kind of personal comments against anything individual, of course, on policy of the college, and that's very, very appropriate, and what's very appropriate, and we look forward to hearing from you. What does it look like for three minutes? So, there's a few more cards, and we're going to ask that each speaker speak for about three minutes. Vice President fellow will give you a warning, and then if you happen to go over, I kind of will remind you that you're on. And I'm sure we'll all cooperate here together. So, and here's how we'd like to do this. When you get out there, the first thing you do, if you just repeat your name slowly, so we know who you are, even though it's on the card, sometimes we don't pronounce it as well as we wish we could. And the other board officer, trustee Brown, will be calling names in advance, so if you're the next one or the third one up, if you can just kind of get ready, come up to the rostrum and get ready to queue up right in the microphone. We have a really heavy agenda tonight, and a lot of other items to go over after this, but this is, of course, very important. So, trustee Brown, will you read the first three names, please?
Absolutely. So, we'll begin with Jane Hollinger, to be followed by Nat Reed, and then Marjorie Smith. So, if you could please just line up close by, I would appreciate it.
I think most of you know usually the board, this is non-agenda items, so the board usually will not be responding to those. This is your first time here. The board will really not be responding to those. This is a time for you, the public, to express your issues and concerns to us.
Jane Hollinger. You may think, why does this woman keep coming to speak to us? I come because since 1971, I have been associated with this college. I have seen peaks and crevices, and I have seen all the work towards equitably solving problems and addressing issues in all areas of the college. And now I am sad, because even when we had differences during previous time periods, the various facets of the college, in spite of some dissension, worked toward building the best possible academic experience for our students and cooperative working conditions where all employees were respected. I am sad this is no longer the case. A good portion of the faculty classified and students feel that there is no respect for their abilities or their goals. I am sad that a student told me she tried over 500 times to enter the computer to obtain newly devised, but not well-planned second spring. Students tell me they wish they had gone to Santa Monica, which retained the winter session, or to Glenville. I am sad that community members say to me that it is too bad enough Pasadena City College, because it used to be such a good college. And I tell them that regardless of what the administration does, the staff continues to do the job, the faculty continues to give outstanding presentations in their discipline areas. I am sad there has been so much misrepresentation by the administration in areas like stating that the trimester had been reviewed by the calendar committee, and that the school was determined to make the change. Has anyone done research on trimesters in the community college system? If we change, we will be out of line with other community colleges and most of the schools that accept our graduates. Is that a choice that supports the student population? I am sad that no research was done on the success of winter intercession in many of our discipline areas. In many courses, the longer hours and four days per week environment breed success, not destroy it. I am sad that the strong faculty that retired with an insurance on tape by the president and a letter from the lawyer that past practices would be followed, and we would be offered a class or two after full-time overload. Instead, we were fired only a few days before our classes were to resume last spring. Do you think that no preparation time was devoted to those classes? Do you think that part-time faculty hired three days before the semester had time to build these classes? If you believe that, I am really sad. I am sad the students were vilified and threatened when the student government took no confidence vote in the president, when the courier was chastised for student reporting. Don't we value freedom of speech? I am not sad alone. So many of the school's employees are sad at the decline of collegial environment and the total ignorance displayed in the duplicity of the administration between what it says publicly and what it says privately. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Martin, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Nat Reed. I'm a former chair of the Board of the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce. I'm a parent of former students, and I'm a former teacher at PCC. And with me are two of a very large group of community leaders who have come together to express our concern over what is going on on the campus of PCC. Because we are concerned, we have contributed, each of us, to run an ad, a whole-page ad in tomorrow's Pasadena Star News. And I've brought copies for you, and there are copies for those in the audience who would like them, from Judy Smith in the back. We came together as citizens for a better college. Because of concerns about these highly orchestrated, where we feel are, well, we feel are highly orchestrated, votes of non-confidence, calls for the resignation of the president, we see a spirit of dissension, not cooperation, we hear angry voices at the board meetings with mean language, with character assassination, and we are coming out of the stands to come onto the field to remind you that we elected you. We are the voters. We represent the voters who elected you, and we elected you to run the college. Administrators administer, teachers teach, students learn. We are the ones who pay for this college. We are the taxpayers. It is an atmosphere in which we must all do more with less. That's the sign of the times. You must, as administrators, I know that you would like more money from us, the taxpayers, you must do more with less, and the faculty must do more with less, and this must be the spirit here. We're concerned about the status of the negotiations for contract, that these have gone on so long, that an entire year was lost, a year which the faculty --
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry, thirty seconds. Let me then, Margaret Seatonquist had to leave, let me deliver her message, and this is to President Rocha. You, sir, during the period when your counterparts in other government agencies were having to cut staff and put people on furlough, you found ways to keep every single job at a time when faculty and staff needed those jobs and needed that pay without a single layoff or without a single furlough. You deserve better than the comments you've gotten, the gratitude you've gotten from the faculty. On behalf of the Pasadena area community, sir, we apologize to you for that, and we thank you for saving those salaries, those jobs, and keeping them from furlough. That's our message.
Marjorie Smith?
Trustee Brown, will you call the next two after Marjorie Smith?
My name is Ashley Marjorie Smith. Marjorie.
Thank you.
Members of the Board of Trustees, having read the official missives by both Board and Superintendent President of the Pasadena Area Community College District issued in response to the action of no confidence registered by the Senate on April 15th of this year, I stand before you this evening to register my disappointment. As an active voting member of the Academic Senate and a full-time tenured assistant professor, I am dismayed by the actions of this administration under the leadership of the superintendent and flummoxed by the boards' unprincipled and unanimous support of the Superintendent President and his administration. I have sat on the Senate as an elected representative for my division for approximately two years, and during this time, I have witnessed the undermining and slow erosion of shared governance, a weakening engendered by the action of the Superintendent President. For this reason, and this reason alone, I join my colleagues and fellow senators in registering votes of no confidence. I believe in the process of deliberation the faculty bodies have undertaken is in the best interest of student success, and the faculty, the people actually in the classroom working week by week to ensure that students learn, can and should be trusted to have student success as their foremost priority. Thus, to have my action, the actions of my colleagues, and the action of the Senate characterized as a deliberate discrediting of Dr. Rocha because he is actually a strong leader, dismissed as a tactic related to protracted contract negotiations, and disregarded as personal attacks spearheaded by a very small organized group that is not concerned with things professional or academic is quite disheartening. I assure you all that my concerns are professional as well as academic. I've lost confidence in the leadership of the Superintendent President because his recommendation to the Board regarding changes to the 2012-2013 academic calendar ignored a year-long process of shared governance. This concern is both professional and academic. I've lost confidence in the current leadership because the mandated restructuring plan of the college does not reflect the contributions and recommendations of the constituent bodies that contributed to an extensive and extended process, and thus ignores the mutually agreed-upon and state-regulated policies of shared governance. This concern is both professional and academic. I've lost confidence in leadership that, in spite of a year-long shared governance process to establish appropriate numbers for class size and post-increases to enrollment opposing numbers. Furthermore, I've lost confidence in an administration that, despite claims of prioritizing student success, has hastily implemented a series of short-sighted plans which, despite their intentions, have created onerous obstacles both logistic and pedagogical to student success. Although I'm disappointed, my intentions tonight are simple. I wish to encourage the members of the Board to reconsider their steadfast and stalwart support and be conscientious and mindful of the call to listen openly and exemplify the students' assesse, the way it can and the spirit of practice and in fact be accomplished advice issued recently to the incoming executive board by the current Board President. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Pasadena Board of Trustees, fellow audience, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I have the unique experience of bringing 17 senior citizens with me to the grand premiere of 42. Because you cared enough and you shared, I was once thanked by Pasadena City Foundation for providing those tickets. It was with great disappointment that I did not see Professor Schwartzert attending. So, the $10 that I purposely gave for him to see the movie, and he did not attend, I was asking him to give that $10 to the Pasadena City College Foundation. I think that'd be why we use, I hate to say it used any other way. But thank you so much. It's really a travesty when you see a professor comparing the civil rights movement to entertainment and trivializing it. But you, Board of Trustees, and PCC stood up and said no to that. With sincerity, I thank you, and I still get nervous when I speak, but with sincerity, I thank you, and the Baniger Association thanks you also. Thank you.
John Furman, Simon Fraser, Chris DeLaurie.
Thank you, members of the Board, Mr. President. My name is John Furman. I'm here tonight to express my support for the Board and the administration. I was distressed by the recent no-confidence votes by the faculty. Certainly, there is always room for improvement. I've heard from a number of my friends on the faculty about their perception of a very top-down approach from the president, their perception of a loss of collegiality in the college. But the bottom line is, basically, the Board and the administration have the responsibility to protect the fiscal stability of the college and to maximize its educational offering. Sometimes you just can't wait for six months of consultative hearings and contract negotiations. Sometimes you just have to act, and as best I can tell, the administrations and boards' recent actions have enhanced rather than hurt the students' educational opportunities. If there are savings from the new schedule, or if there's additional funding from the state, as our financial situation seems to be improving, I would hope that the Board and the administration use that money primarily to expand the number of classes available and to expand the number of students within those classes, rather than adjust compensation. So far as I can tell, that's exactly what the Board and administration have done and plan to do, so I would commend you for those actions and hope that you hold firm to those goals of expanding educational opportunity for our students and helping them complete their educational opportunity expeditiously, so they can move up and out and onto careers or four-year institutions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Simon Fraser, Associate Students' President. This will be my last comment after about a year and a half at least of representing directly the organization that is the Associate Students of Pasadena City College. And I'll save the bulk of my report till later. However, I do want to highlight the calendar issue once more. The Calendar Committee, which is charged by this Board to recommend a calendar to you all, did so in April. It was meant to be placed on your agenda for discussion and possible action. It did not appear, and it's been indicated to me that it will not appear. Now, let me be clear. I recognize that the Board of Trustees has the right to make its decisions. Absolutely. However, the Board must give every reasonable consideration to the process that occurs. Our complaint and our issue with no-confidence vote that we took, and we were the first ones, had nothing to do with the faculty. It had nothing to do with negotiations. It had everything to do with a process that we believe and continue to believe was not followed and is not being followed that is there by law. I've been characterized by some factors as being a corner of the Faculty Association. I have been described, and my credit at this Board, my credibility was maligned, my organization's credibility was maligned by members of this Board. I sat by quietly and listened to it. However, when I went back to that table and I participated in that Title V mandated process, it has not again returned to the Board. The process again has not happened. And that has been my complaint for many years, and it continues to be, that the student every reasonable consideration has not been given. And so, when I'm told that I am misrepresenting facts to the statewide organizations that represent us directly, when I'm told that this is definitely not true, and that I should wait for fact-finding, well, I would point out that fact-finding will deal with the faculty negotiations, and that's fine. I will be very seriously considering engaging in fact-finding of my own from the Associate Students' point of view. We only have, I only have a month left in my term. I would rather not spend that time in discussion with the Chancellor's office, in discussion with an independent fact-finder, because I believe, as Dr. Rocha has said, truth will act. And I stand by our claims, I stand by our process, and I also stand by the fact that once again, a shared governance decision, a recommendation to the Board, has not been given every reasonable consideration, and based on my indication so far, will not be given reasonable consideration by the Board. And that, as we all know, is a violation of Title V. That has always been so far, that will continue to be my issue, aside the fact that 14,000 students at least were allowed into extended spring registration come day one, and very fewer than were able to register because our computers died. Thank you.
Margaret Seatonquist to follow. And Yuni Parada.
Good evening. I'm Chris Pilon, professor. I understand that the Board does not really understand how a lot of things work on this campus, and I'd like to give you an example of how your removal of the winter intercession and adding of this extended spring have affected my program, graphic communications technology. Traditionally, if a student is enrolled in a class in a semester, like an A class, if they're passing that successfully and there's no indication that they're not failing, they're allowed to enroll in the B-level class when enrollment comes along. When you put this extended spring schedule on top of the spring schedule, it completely blocked that action. Students were considered to be co-enrolled, not enrolled in two separate semesters. And what that meant was that none of my advanced students were able to enroll in the extended spring classes. So, that has effectively kept a lot of students from finishing the capstone course that would have completed their certificate. It will affect certificate completion rates in my area negatively. This is not helping student success to have done this. This is actually blocking our students from completing their program. I have a class now that's almost completely full of beginning students, rather than a balance of some A, some B, some C, some D. I would really like to encourage you to consider returning to the traditional winter calendar, summer calendar, two semesters, which we had before. It was working fine. We did not have any of these kinds of problems, and you have really sort of derailed a system that was working very well and caused students to not be able to complete their work, rather than to be able to be successful at their studies. And this is in the vocational area, so we're not talking about transfer students here. We're talking about students completing career and technical education programs. You have hurt those students. Thank you very much.
My name is Yuni Parada. I am a Pasadena resident since 1975, and I have been involved in the community ever since. I'm presently a member of different organizations, among them Pasadena Human Service Commission, ACU, and several. But today, I'm representing Pasadena Latino Forum as co-chair. Pasadena Latino Forum was founded to advocate and find ways to improve conditions of the Latino community and the community in general. Since 2007, when James Consler was still president of this organization, we have been requesting equity in the hiring of teachers and staff of this college. During Ms. Profumo's administration, we continued the same advocacy. We used to address this body, President Martin and Board Member Jeanette Mann should remember, requesting that teachers looking like us, like me, be hired with no success. The hiring of teachers was in the hands of the almighty Academic Senate. The issue at present, that the staff and faculty are upset with the administration, I think should be the other way around. The administration should be fed up with the machiavellian manipulations that certain staff and managers are orchestrating against Dr. Rocha. The issue at the rubricus of their no-confidence vote is, in my view, is the almighty dollar. It's not that the administration does not attend to the needs of the student. This college is top-rated. A contract that allows a natural professor to earn $197,000 in a single year should be questioned. Any contract allowing this kind of abuse should not be ratified by this body. And of course, hiring full-time tenure teachers looking like the student population in serves should be considered. I pray that Dr. Rocha keep himself strong to the manipulations of the teachers and that the Board of Trustees supports his endeavor. Thank you.
Danny Hammond, Roger Adams, and Dean Stepan.
President Martin, members of the Board, thank you for your time. My name is Danny Hammond, and I am a faculty member at PCC and the co-lead negotiator for the Faculty Association. I'm here to respond to your official statement of April 15th. In particular, I want to address the statement number two, in which you suggested that the Senate's vote of no confidence was premature because all the facts are not in, and that the issue is before PER. I also just want to address those in the audience who spoke before, who referred to us in the union apparently as mean and angry and orchestrators.
Sir, if you have, this is a Board of Trustees meeting.
I'm not angry. I'm not angry, and I'm not mean, okay? So, I'm just here to talk to you.
And that needs to be towards me.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. With all due respect, what you don't seem to, what the Board doesn't seem to understand is the difference between contract negotiations and shared governance, or the difference between doing what you may believe to be legal and doing what you think is best for the students and staff and faculty at PCC. The Academic Senate's vote of no confidence has nothing to do with contract negotiations and the unfair labor practice charge filed by the Pasadena City College, filed against Pasadena City College. The unfair labor practice was filed by the Faculty Association, because we believe that imposing a calendar on faculty which significantly and substantially changes their working conditions without negotiating constitutes an unfair labor practice. And as you state, PER will make its decision on this matter probably sometime in July. This is a contract issue. However, even if it is determined that PCC can legally change the school calendar, significantly and substantially changing the working conditions for hundreds of faculty and staff, and learning conditions for thousands of students without negotiating, this ruling has nothing to do with and does not affect the administration's blatant and continued disregard for the shared governance process here at PCC. It does not mean that it was the right decision or in the best interests of the students, staff, or faculty. On the other hand, the Academic Senate deals with shared governance issues, and you're going to hear from them later, so I'll skip over this part. No matter how many times you conflate the issue of contract negotiations with shared governance intentionally or unintentionally, it will not change the fact that these are two very different issues.
Thirty seconds.
The Board ruling has no bearing on the Academic Senate's vote of no confidence. As you're stating, all the facts are not in. The facts are in. Let me just read some of the facts. There was a calendar that was approved and was vetted through the whole shared governance process. It was reversed on August 29th without any shared governance input. That calendar was opposed by a very large and local group of students, staff, and faculty. They asked important questions about the implications. They provided sound and thoughtful reasons why they were opposed to it, many of which have come to fruition. I'll send the rest of it to you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Members of the Board, my name is Roger Adams. I'm an attorney. I'm a member of the law firm of Adam Hocken and Hudson here in Pasadena, and I'm an alum of this school. I went through the Pasadena City Schools, and I spent four years on this campus. The first two years was when this campus was sharing, was being shared by a brand-new entity called Pasadena High School and Pasadena City College. And then I spent two years here at Pasadena City College. I came here instead of going to USC where I wanted to go, because my parents couldn't afford to send me to USC. But once I began attending this school, I found it to be a good place. I felt I was in the right place. And I later was able to go to USC on a full-tuition scholarship. Then I went to the Navy, and then I came back and went to USC Law School. Because I had these good experiences here at Pasadena City College, I'm quite distressed by the controversy that's going on here. I am one of the signatories of a letter that Mr. Nat Reed told you earlier is going to be published in the Star News, and I support the administration in its negotiations. And I think that the mediation and the hearing that's going to be conducted should resolve this issue. Thank you.
Leneau Wilkins to follow.
I'm Dean Stepan, retired president of Hancock Construction Company. The company headquartered here in Pasadena. We design and build major commercial structures throughout the United States, from Long Island, New York, to Princeville, Hawaii. And I've had a number of years of experience dealing and negotiating with unions across this country, because we are a union contractor. Union negotiations can be difficult. Management and labor often have conflicts in detail, but usually an overriding interest in the success of an entity. In this case, the 100-year-old institutess of the -- In this case, the hundred-year-old success of the institution. Examples of my concern are the votes of no-confidence and the failure of union leadership to allow a vote on the mediated labor contract terms. Union leadership seems more intent on expanding their power rather than enhancing the long-term interest of the faculty. Lost or simply deferred pay increases, negotiating sustainable benefits, deadlock negotiations, and perhaps most important, eroding public confidence in the institution that the public enables and supports. At some point, the faculty should question whether they are properly represented. There are a number of other unions that represent multiple campuses that are more experienced and perhaps better prepared to represent them, and that have the long-term, and could have the long-term interest of PCC community. I would encourage the Board to be determined in the defense of the trust the community has placed now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lionel Wickens, and probably for the last nine years I've worked here as an adjunct counselor, just about every area that we have, from student support services to career technical education. Where I currently work as a CTE Transitions Coordinator. And the students that were here earlier are part of, I guess what I would consider the movement of us digging deep into Pasadena Unified and some of our, actually all of the area community college district, high schools, and trying to build pathways and a sense of career awareness for our students. The CTE showcase that we had a few weeks ago, we had about 400 students in attendance, and the students loved being able to participate in the career technical education offerings. I'm here today to say thank you from a leadership perspective. And what I mean by that is, having worked in CTE for about five years or so, for a while we suffered through not having a dean, as we had a retired, retired Ellen Liggins, Associate Dean of CTE, and then trying to find that right person and waiting and looking for leadership, and you guys offered us that in Solomon Dobbin. And I think what you will see in the next few years will be dramatic in terms of the success and the persistence and retention of the students that are coming in, primarily because of the model highlighted by Rock Klein in his TLC to Deborah Bird and the Design Tech Pathway, the media pathways, us establishing the Health Science Pathway, as well as branching out to a variety of other areas. So we're excited. That has always been the case. And I believe CTE hasn't always been given the notoriety that it deserves in preparing a contingent and cohort of students for academic and career success. Many of our students go on and transfer, so it's not just to the workplace, like many would have to assume, that occurs that way. So in essence, I'm excited because I'm able to play a part in building bridges for students to make their way to Pasadena City College and move beyond. This has been a long time coming, and there's a lot of traction that is gaining weight in the high school arena, and they have the right people in place at the district, Pasadena Unified, to help us continue this bridge and to see some great outcomes. So thank you.
(applause)
I'd like to thank all of you for coming down. And now move on. I want to especially thank you for keeping the debate civil. I know I was taking notes, and I'm sure the rest of the trustees were listening carefully as well. The next item on our agenda is...